Welcome to our special council meeting tonight, Monday the 29th of May. And then welcoming you here. Very proud that we have not only seen Bundla people, the traditional owners of the land which we met today, and pay our respects to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders who may be present tonight. Thank you and welcome. Our attendance record. I expect we have an apology from councillor Campbell. She wasn't quite sure. The fact that she's not here, at this stage, she's an apology. And I'm pretty sure I've got her right this time. We have no leave of absence. Other than three, declaration of members' conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest that they need to mention right now? Councillor Westerman.
Um, I picked up interest for four point two point three submissions on draft of the a new business and other plan. Um, he mentioned support through development. Happy to stay in the meeting and talk.
Thank you councillor. There are no further declarations. We'll move on to item four, reports from council offices, four point one. The office of the chief executive officer, his ordinary report, four point one point one, which tonight involves a Regional Development Australia Air Peninsula presentation by CEO that's come up for us tonight at our request or our invitation, Ryan Viney. I don't know whether our CEO wants to introduce the report.
Through there, oh, the report is so explanatory, it's just to confirm that. Um, CEO, I'm R D A E P, Ryan, I'm going to be doing a presentation today in line with council's resolution at this April meeting. So I'll invite Ryan to come forward. I think you've met everyone, all councillors before, Ryan.
Confidential.
Yep.
Just before you start, we will follow you and go into confidential.
Did I have somebody move in a second, that we go to confidential? Move councillor Inglis, seconded. Councillor Border. Jumped around again. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thank you. On four point one point one, then, we do have a recommendation. The presentation. Councillor Knox, are you moving that one?
I'm moving number one, we don't need number two now.
Well, CEO, through the mayor, number two is still required because briefly now as well. Verbally, still should be kept in confidence.
I get it, but what, what, what in that presentation was?
To be honest, not a lot, um, just checking everything in that presentation that we're comfortable with being on the public records.
Comfortable with the.
So in that case, um, as suggested, number two.
We have one recommendation then, council receives a notice of presentation by Mr Ryan Viney, CEO, Regional Development Australia Air Peninsula. You still move to councillor Knox? Those in favour? Harry? Thank you. Right, moving on to four point two, corporate services, ordinary reports, four point two point one. Civic relocation to Edward John Air High School. Thank you very much, Ron. At the juniper, let's see, or somebody else is going to speak to this.
I'm happy to, uh, until the CEO's back, if you like.
Yes, as long as somebody does.
And thank you through the mayor. And I, I will, um, take the report as, as having been read by members, but just as a, as a brief overview, um, following the partial roof collapse back in, uh, June 2020, um, council started to undertake some repairs to this building. And as those repairs unfolded, it became very evident that there were significantly more issues with this building than what was originally thought were the problems. Um, on and following inspection, it was realised that the cost of those repairs at that point in time, uh, were going to be in the order of four point five million dollars. But that didn't actually even provide for any future proofing of this building in terms of service delivery, nor any improvements in terms of, um, the efficiency and effectiveness of operations coming from this building. It was purely and simply repairs. At that point in time, council resolved to undertake a relocation study to understand what the options were before, whether or not it would proceed to doing the works on this building, to, uh, ensure some, uh, long-term occupation and, and ability for the council to stay in here, or whether or not there was another location that the, um, that the council could relocate to. Those other locations, uh, were identified as, uh, one being the Edward John Air High School, which, uh, was becoming vacant from the education department, um, or a greenfield site, um, that was not Edward John Air or this site, or another option to demolish this building, rebuild on the current site. Those were the four options that were, uh, identified for examination. And following quite some degree of, uh, investigation into the various costs of those particular uh, options, uh, council resolved in July last year to, uh, do a feasibility study as to the costs of demolishing this building and rebuilding a, uh, civic centre on this site, or permanently relocating to the Edward John Air High School. Both of those options, and indeed all of the options that were explored as part of the relocation study, uh, would require the temporary relocation of council to the Edward John Air High School to allow for the works or the building works, or whatever the case might be, uh, depending on the option that was, uh, landed on by the council. Um, so, uh, following that resolution, work then commenced, uh, by the administration, where I must say that some preliminary works on this building were done to ensure that the, uh, that the building was safe. Um, as you would be aware, the scaffolding on, uh, Forsyth Street was erected to ensure that the wing there of the building, um, uh, maintained safety standards, uh, and, uh, some very minor works, uh, internally were done, um, as well. The, um, uh, those works allowed and the inspection that was undertaken back in June 2020, uh, was for about two years. And I'm, I'm looking at Tim, who's here as, as our engineer, who's been, um, in this. So those, uh, those works and, and, uh, and what we've done and the inspection regime that we implemented back in 2020, 2021, um, told us that, uh, we would be okaying in this building for about two years with the, with some of the works that we did. The, um, as I said, work then started on what would be the relocation of the civic services to the Edward John Air High School. Um, the primary principle that we adopted in undertaking, uh, to garner what was required to relocate to the Edward John Air High School was that minimal changes would be made to the school, um, only those changes that would be necessary to allow us to operate as office accommodation out of that site, uh, would be undertaken. As has been presented in the report before you, uh, Stella Meek, uh, have facilitated that body of work for us. And the costs, uh, of relocation to the Edward John Air High School, uh, and we are seeking a budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that, um, uh, the relocation can be facilitated. Those costs, as I said, have been based on very preliminary, very, uh, minimalistic works. Um, the school or that building is operating, previously operating as a school. So there is some necessary changes that are needed in order for it to, uh, be suitable for office accommodation, particularly with security, particularly with windows and doors, and particularly with data and cable that is required. Um, the, um, uh, in, in addition to the costs of the actual building and the relocation, uh, we have secured a final draft lease or a final form lease from the education department for that building for a peppercorn rate of one dollar ten, uh, on an annual basis, on the proviso that council will undertake and maintain the grounds and those buildings during our, um, operation there. It's a two-year lease plus a right of renewal of two years, and that gives us a period of time to work out, uh, where council's permanent location will be. Given the, uh, passage of time since the original investigation and inspection of this building, um, uh, has now been about eighteen months, uh, a further inspection, or it was prudent and absolutely appropriate for a further engineering inspection of this building to be done to understand as to what, if any, further deterioration has occurred at the building. Um, as is highlighted in the report, uh, further deterioration, uh, has been experienced and it is noted that the, uh, the box cutters within the, uh, internal, uh, internal of the building, um, have deteriorated further and are, and will cause internal damage if they are left to remain, they are leaking. In addition, uh, it is urgent that make safe work be done on the Forsyth, uh, Forsyth Street windwalls, uh, to ensure that, um, there isn't any, um, any material falling from height, um, and therefore causing a risk to, uh, anybody who's passing by, uh, in the street. So, uh, I guess in summary, uh, the investigations that we have undertaken, um, the most recent inspections, uh, have shown that it is critical that council, um, uh, relocates from this building, um, that the option of relocating to the Edward John Air High School is the most appropriate option, um, following on from the recommendation back in, um, July 2022, at this moment in time, given that is a location that can accommodate all of council services. And, uh, thirdly, uh, there is a critical need for this building to, uh, be considered for demolition at the earliest possible, uh, convenience and, um, and that further investigation as to the costs of that demolition, uh, be undertaken as a to the June council meeting for final decision. I'll take questions from there.
Can I ask, what was wrong with the doors and windows at Edward John Air?
Um, the doors and, and the windows, um, it's primarily doors that are requiring to be changed over so that the security system as required, uh, can be put in place. So it's the, it's the nature of the door so that the security system can be put in place. There is, I should have stated, um, there is some further work that we can do in terms of these costs to reduce the costs down further, and that is one of the pieces of work that we can do further is, is choosing a different security system, uh, that will bring the costs down further. Um, so these costs that have, that are before you are at the, at the higher end, we do expect it to come down.
Thank you. Right, now looking at those here, just before I go into the next one, I did prior to the meeting, ask the CEO to come back with a little bit more of a breakdown at a future meeting of that six hundred and thirty thousand, because naively I expected the main cost to be shifting and not that, so he will come back with that information.
I do have that actually now. Do you have that? Yeah. Yeah. So, um, for members' information, the, this is the breakdown of the six hundred and thirty thousand from an Edward John Air High School, uh, perspective. Uh, preliminaries and demolition works is a hundred and forty thousand, data and electrical is ninety five thousand, security is a hundred thousand, doors and windows is a hundred and seventy thousand, and services, which is mechanical and hydraulic services, thirty five thousand, and fit out a further ninety thousand, and that fit out relates to ceilings and linings, uh, some joinery that needs to happen, some tiling and some painting. And we can email those, those, uh, that breakdown cost, uh, through to members.
Councillor Clubbaker.
Um, I think you've most probably answered my question anyway, Cathy, but you said that the money we're spending, that, that quote is on the higher side already. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so are you comfortable with that figure considering some of our other projects we've had, kind of in the past twelve months or so? We've, we've obviously got a budget and have blown it out quite significantly.
Yes, I am comfortable with that figure. The approach that we've taken with getting the quotes, uh, for this body of work, um, so we engaged Stella Meek, who are architects and designers, they first undertook the initial works together with T and K, uh, as, um, uh, data and electrical engineers, um, uh, to understand the scope of works in the first instance. We then, uh, tendered and, um, uh, engaged what's called early contractor involvement in, uh, getting the costings for the work, and that early contractor involvement has, uh, looked at those costings, uh, got the contractors in, gone right through the whole of the building and the extent of the works, and come up with those costings. In addition, with this early contractor involvement, we are seeking a fixed cost fee, and that's the upper order of the fixed cost fee.
Just another point, so with, with the stuff that's going to be done, all the, the temporary works or whatever, would they be done in a, in a fashion so that if we decide to relocate there permanently, they'd be fit for purpose?
Yes.
You have so, Inglis. Um, we have talked anything out here, Cathy, there's no.
Sorry.
There's no works being started out there on this project?
No.
How far away are we from doing it? Because it seems that this has just been dragging and dragging and dragging. Are we close to, um, resolution to approve this money so works can start? Is there any timelines on this?
The timelines for the work, um, the, with having the early contractor involvement, the timeline for the doing of the works is approximately eight weeks. As soon as we get approval in terms of the budget allocation, uh, we will finalise the scope of the works, the drawings of the works, and get that done as soon as possible. The contractors are saying, um, uh, you know, give them twelve weeks and they'll get it done.
When, when's it going to come to council for approval?
This is the report for approval. So if you endorse the recommendations tonight, uh, we will commence, um, the engagement. Yes. Basically.
Councillor Knox.
You mentioned a, um, name for demolition at Edward John Air. What's actually that for?
Um, there is some extraneous joinery, um, and various, um, areas within each of the classrooms that are, uh, make it very difficult for it to be office accommodation. Um, things like, um, uh, poles coming down in the middle of the rooms with, uh, cabling and, and so on in it, that, uh, does not suit then the configuration of desks. What we're doing is we, this organisation will be moving into a completely open space environment and to allow for the number of desks to go into the minimal number of classrooms, uh, so that we could contain the costs, there is some demolition work needed.
One thing I'll mention is I think we need to go into Edward John Air longer term, because I don't think we've got the money to do anything else. And I'm worried too, how are we going to find the money to pay for the demolition of this building as well?
Um, that will certainly be the subject of the report that will come to the June council meeting.
Councillor Todd.
Um, I just had a question, the Stella Meek report, will we have access to that? It talks about using it as a starting point for looking at, um, future. Will we have access to that?
Yes, that report was, was presented to the July 2022 council meeting, and we can redistribute it to the new council members so that you can see that report, thanks very much.
Councillor Borden. A very quick one, on page eleven, it's just the chronological order, it seems, of the key messages. The fourth dash point is to make the building safe long-term would require four point five million dollars, plus one million dollars per year for ongoing maintenance. In messaging to the community about this, I would just personally like to see that a bit more, a bit closer to the top, um, to become, I think, a third one I've suggested. So after there are no immediate safety concerns, um, and the reason I say that, and also digress into the, the Rex issue, but, um, it was a nine percent rate rise for the, instead of a thirty five dollar per passenger, if that was put to the community like that, I pretty sure that wouldn't be really happy with what we've done with Rex. Um, and so I just didn't want to go down that path again, I just thought if we just said, well, if you don't like a fifty, that's four point five sound, um, but obviously not as aggressively as that, but just to say, this is why we don't like four point five million just as much as anyone doesn't like it. So here's the next best or the least worst alternative that we have.
You for that statement.
Thank you. You, and your councillor Todd?
All right. I think my, I've lost my screen and I can't read you off. It might let me read you off.
The screen's filled. Of that, and the one that used to be there is not there anymore.
Yes, I can see it.
Yeah.
It has to pay at once. If I was a read you on choice.
No, it hasn't.
Just a quick question from CEO, I'm late, am I able to take part in the rest of the meeting or I can pay?
Uh, yes, we, we note, absolutely, in the minutes when councillors either enter or leave the council meeting, um, just in, just, if you're in, you will need to advise the council if you do have any conflicts of interest regarding any of the items, so.
Well, we have a recommendation in front of us, no further input from administration, CEO. Councillor Knox.
Moving.
Moving, and councillor Border seconded. What was the motion? Those in favour? Okay. Right, item with four point two point two fees and charges registered for twenty twenty three, twenty four. You will speak to this, I'll have to just read, CEO.
Happy to take this red, but I, I hope there'll be a number of questions and we'll have to respond to their questions.
Councillor Knox.
Just a couple. Um, I'm interested in knowing if we're going to reintroduce charges for the use of the boat ramp in the marina, it's the first one.
Yes, and the plan that one was to, um, consider that alongside the upgrade, sort of, um, as a separate, um, yeah, break.
Thank you, my dear.
If I, if I don't mind, I'm just adding to that. The intention, um, that we may to bring back to council is to look at, I think, increasingly increasing the fees and charges for some of the, um, user page facilities, uh, that exist within our city, including, uh, the, um, the berths within the marina, as well as, um, boat launch fees, so we will bring those back, in, to increase those due course.
You might want to use Cowal as a guide, because they have introduced some substantial charges down there for the use of their boat ramp, I think it's something like fifty dollars a month. Um, I've got a photograph of the sign for anybody's interest, which has all the charges on it. Um, the other one is the, um, camp sites to the north of the city, I'm not, north of Portolali, basically. Um, we don't charge currently for them other than Portolali itself, but there are lots of other sites on Portolali, um, even between the campsite and the lighthouse, people are staying. That, we should think about introducing a charge for them as well, because they do use the facilities and the toilet block, et cetera. But we've got all those sites further north of the peninsula, um, that has no charge for it all. I think we need to introduce a online booking system and get them to pay.
Yes, the chair, I'm actually in a conversation internally very recently, um, about rescuing a, or a booking system, um, so, yeah, we're commencing, uh, that, the intention being that, um, the council will be the first in, um, investigating as part of that, and we will put all our answers on, around studies later.
I think, I think if you look at Cowal, if I can correct that, council, and if you look at Dambie Bay, I don't know where the system is in place.
That's been named through the mayor, if I can just answer that. So, yeah, so the air, like, LGA has been advocating for some time for the book easy system, um, that is the system that we'll be looking at implementing, um, but in doing the implementation, we need to, um, do some, um, comments, um, around the introduction of fees and charges in those different locations. Um, so the plan is to, um, bring those fees in place once the book, the book easy system is ready for, for the council.
Thank you. Councillor Borden.
Thank you. Just wanted to double check the boat launching introduction of fee. Has there been feedback, at what stages that at, as far as getting feedback from the relevant stakeholders?
Yes, we've not yet engaged stakeholders about, um, that fee, as, um, the manager of finance mentions, we will look at it as part of the boat ramp upgrade, um, so at the time, um, that, that works concludes would be around the time that we'd be starting to look at introducing those fees, and we'll need to do consultation, uh, with various stakeholders, including the marine, uh, users down around the, the marina, um, yeah. Um, I'll just put a photo in advance, there'll be some users of those facilities that will not want to pay, um, and, um, as per some previous and recent discussions with council, given our financial unsustainable position, uh, we need to start transitioning away from, um, essentially no fees or very low fees, particularly for services such as this, um, dare I say, airport hangars is another, um, example where council really does need to look at, um, the fees and charges that we apply for, um, limited users, um, to be able to access and use some of those facilities. So, uh, we'll be progressively bringing back reports to council to endorse, um, appropriate, um, fees, uh, for each of those services and facilities over time.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor, Deputy Mayor, Tom.
I'm sorry, I'm, sorry, I didn't mean to, I said a couple of questions, um, and just a, a comment that I like the direction that's going, considering the water risk committee's guidance to try and drive other revenue streams. So I think that's a really key one, especially if there's places in our, um, portfolio of opportunities where there's either zero coming in or it's just drastically below, especially given the direction that Wiler's going to go in. So I'm very, very happy to see that, um, with one caveat of the messaging being pretty spot on, as best as we can possibly do. Um, and I think they've just given a roundtable of the, the R-Cup inevitability that's going to happen so that we can be prior without that. Um, and I guess that speaks to the next, the next couple of points that I was going to say, it was just about the recycled water, um, just is that explained to the users? Or is it slightly, the bill is, the next bill is higher, which I would assume that wouldn't be like that, but it's just how that's explained to the, uh, the users of that, that water? And then if, if someone's going to respond to this, um, it's more of a comment really, but the animal management as well, just to get another explanation as to either the rate payers pick up that bill, or it is, it is passed on to the user payers. I really think giving that messaging is so important, because the person who doesn't have a dog, or doesn't have a boat, or doesn't fly, um, I don't think they would like the idea of paying for the people that do have dogs, do fly, um, and, um, you know, if it was framed in that way, uh, I think we sort of position ourselves quite equitable. Um, and so that, that's really just a comment to take on.
Thank you, councillor, Deputy Mayor, Tom.
Yeah, I was just wondering if I could get a response to the email that I sent out, um, it would have been over the weekend, because I'm told I didn't have internet last Thursday and Friday on my, um, laptop, just in regards to the Wiler Show office, um, rental, I think it's a hundred and nineteen dollars a day, and the second one was, uh, camping at Jumalye. We've got prices on there and there's a no camping sign on the gate, probably causing a bit of confusion. And just hoping I can get a. And just hoping I can get a response for those two questions.
Yeah, through the air, um, sorry, just checking my, something, I didn't hear what you were getting at, um, talking about that, what do you, um, giving, so I guess I've discussed with the lesson classes. And, um, there's been historic phase that have, yeah, uh, end up still a little bit, so yeah, we'll remove those two from the tier list.
Thank you so much. I've been asking for five years.
Well, any final questions? Councillor Simpson? There's a lot of rumors. We used to have a launching fee down in the breakwater, down in the thing, where we had problems with, um, the shit running. And it didn't take long for it to get wrecked. So I think we've got to get that very carefully and how we action that failure.
Chair, the, the thing you might find out is that the book easy, we set up something, um, easy, um, booking system that that could be leveraged for, for things such as national boating. And so obviously we probably log into our system, but we are in one way, um, through our system and then, uh, sort of dating ones, group ones. So we see that, um, setting up an online booking system is having a few advantages, is the one there is.
Yes, Simpson, if you have an online booking system. And you, and I've got a blog, I've got a blog, I've got an original topic. You need somebody to please it. Before we had, I think we have a, a barrier of some description, um, you've got a voucher.
Do the two people start things again.
Yeah, so the online system gives us the ability to clearly record if someone has bought, went and paid for these facilities. If we then go on that, uh, haven't paid, right, so actually the student for, for non payment. Um, so compliance will be important to ensure that people are doing quite good.
I have a problem with that because we don't, we don't chase that dog poo on a jetty, we don't chase, chase that often, people off, dogs off the lead. Yeah, we chase people not playing logic, but where are we getting people from?
Yes, so physically it's easy to go and find out whether there's a boat parked, parked in the marina that hasn't paid for the, the privilege of parking.
Where's not planning, except we can go on it.
And being others who also use, um, some of the booking users to assist with the surveillance of people not doing what they. Um, I think the, I'll call it the, the old days of trying to put physical barriers in, actually prevent or give access to people using facilities, um, is problematic and we need to look at more on, on virtual approaches to that.
Thank you, CEO. Yes, I'm sure we'll get information, councillor Simpson. There was one, before we finish questions, I did raise earlier with the CEO, I just had one question relating to pay six days fees and charges. Does ten dollars per hour recoup all our lighting costs at the three ovals? Is it probably not, I think, if something was to be reviewed. That's the sort of thing.
Yeah, so that fee we introduced, uh, the first time, because we didn't actually have the away, wrongs. Um, what we've done is look at probably the overall cost, um, you know, basically sort of compare that to some, um, um, good examples of our, you know, sort of small sort of facilities. So because everybody paying forty dollars a year on Christmas for senior, um, use of the oval, um, the ten dollars is on top of that. So I ended up paying a fifty dollar fee to use an oval like that. So, um.
It's just that, I think.
It's, uh, probably people will find that over time, but I'm looking at our, um, yeah, goods, okay, questions without that, but lots, um, but, um, and we can also review the usage, so that like cover things like license to football, even if we had, like, um, hiring, like, clubs, that's.
Um, Kev, help me my money.
Yes, sir.
To be, to be clear, um, and to answer the, the question the mayor raised during the meeting, um, ten dollars for lighting and fifty dollars for the use of facilities is not covering the cost. It's a long way short of full cost recovery. So over time, council will need to look at those fees and charges and look to, increase them to be able to recover the costs associated with those facilities.
Councillor Border, your last chance.
Okay, and given that direction, and I'm, again, I'm fully supportive of that one hundred percent that the messaging to the community is, look, it's costing, when you use that oval for three hours for your football training, it's costing the rate payers while a hundred fifty dollars for that three hours. Um, we're charging you ten dollars for the lighting. Again, not to lay the point, but I just think it's a huge opportunity for us to share with the community, here are the costs of running it. Um, we're in a deficit position, just to continue to build that story, just bring them along the journey. That's, that's my point. Thank you, George. That man is nice.
Just, uh, in your sense.
The comment, we need to say long enough about this because participation rates in football is dropping off at an alarming rate. And I would not be surprised if it doesn't get to the point very shortly, but not all the teams that here are going to survive. So that needs to be considered, you know, it might have lost facilities and nobody using it. So that's something that needs to be thought about long enough. Just another observation for sport, we need to fight back home for the junior soccer kids and guys because air basketball on Sunday morning is just about, not for purpose those guys anymore, just so, I drive past the sun, there's just so many people, they're playing soccer and cars parked here, there and everywhere. That's just something that needs to be considered.
Thank you, councillor. All right. We have a opportunity for questions there. We have a recommendation. Somebody care to move, it's second move councillor Knox, second to councillor Border. What will the motion? Those in favour? Harry, thank you. That's a very good idea. Would somebody like to move for an adjournment or a restaurant before we go into the next item? Move councillor border, second to councillor Todd. Fifteen minutes, put the motion for those in favour. During our meeting, could I have, uh, somebody? Move seconded, we kick back into the meeting. Uh, move councillor border, second to councillor Clive. What will the motion? Those in favour? Yes, that our adjournment ends, thank you. Item four point two point three, the submission on the draft twenty twenty three, twenty four annual budget plan and, uh, annual business plan and budget. That would work with the CEO and I'd like to suggest that we might care to suspend standing orders. Will allow us a broader discussion, but getting straight to the point. And then we can go back into it for a formal recommendation. So if you agree with that thought, would somebody care to move that we suspend standing orders? Move councillor English for, in fifteen minutes enough? They all started with fifteen minutes. Second at councillor Todd for fifteen minutes will suspend standing orders. Those in favour? Harry, thank you. Yeah, you wish to have anybody speak to this or yourself? I think it is really, I'm favouring it, right? Any questions or comments then? Well, can I start then? If everybody's slow on their red buttons, I did a fair bit of research on them. Yeah. I did a fair bit of research after the weekend, particularly with other air peninsula councils. And while most of them were still about to get a consultation, we do seem to be one of those way ahead of some of the others. Some of the councils haven't even got any information up about their twenty three, twenty four plan. But just to throw this into the melting pot, because I've come up with Stricky Bay eight point five percent, Cleve nine point eight percent, Port Lincoln nine point five, Tumby Bay eleven point five, Sojuna ten point five. Many Adelaide councils are above eight percent. Several I saw, Port Adelaide Enfield close to nine. So when you look at ours, I do believe in past years, we have been concerned at times when we might have been wanting a higher rate, rate increase and others were down low. Couple of Adelaide councils were down around about the four percent, six percent. Certainly on air peninsula, the other councils that I haven't listed there either haven't released it or could not find it at this stage, but that's, I just throw that in to give you a bit of an idea of how we're sitting with the rest of air peninsula. So on that basis, councillor Simpson. Well, yes, they've released their seven percent. That's their fixed charge's nine hundred dollars, not five hundred and eighty cents. Sorry, what was that? Port Augusta. Oh, Port Augusta. Yeah, well, Port Augusta percentage wise, they're talking six percent or period seven point two, but then, as we know, there's always other factors. Any other questions or comments? Right.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, councillor Border.
How do we respond? How does the council respond to those written submissions? That seem to be very much just an opinion, negative one. How does that get responded to or is it responded to?
My recollection is we don't respond. Not a big guy, but.
Uh, so, yeah, so when there's specific questions asked, we answer those questions. So there are a couple of, um, bits of, um, feedback that had specific questions in it and they've been responded to by him. Um, when councillor Dodge the budget at June, if, if that, if adopted, um, we do send out a general resource to everyone who's, um, given a written submission saying, um, for the limited process, um, while we're saved and support council to, um, resolve. Thank you.
So now, yes, councillor Knox.
Um, normally dead against rate increases or significant rate increases. I think we are in dire financial strife and we have more dire financial strife facing us with this building, et cetera. I, I think we actually need to look at going a little bit higher than the eight. I, I think we should be looking at something like nine, nine point seven. And clear some of that debt.
Thank you, councillor. Now the comments. Uh, councillor Campbell.
Um, I'm, I'm speaking for the, um, I owe you like fifty grand tonight, um, in that it does concern me, um, the amount that we're asking for. Um, and that for some people it might seem not a lot for some good. But for some people, this could be the tipping point. And also I'm a little concerned about the CPI because as inflation goes down, which is, which it is forecast to, they're going to be compounding that next year when it changes to the land. Um, what we're ending up being right. Oh, thank you. And I think although we are in a deficit and I realize that, I think if we're going to expect the community to accept this with some grace, we have to show some of our own and make a commitment that for perhaps for our term, we will go increasing our pay in any way, some form, to show that we are, oh, we need the money to keep the council going. We are not going to become extra costly for, for what we need to do to show them that. We are here for them and not always. I don't know if that made sense. Uh, I'm a little frightened, I'm probably not making a little bit of sense tonight, but I think I've got across the spirit.
You have. Thank you, councillor Campbell. Councillor Todd.
Um, I, I personally would be dead against anything over the nine percent, I think, um, in the current times. I agree with what councillor Campbell's saying, that people are struggling at the moment and particularly people on low incomes. Um, you know, we've gone up, out to consultation with a figure. I think to then turn around and say, actually, we've changed our minds and we think the figure should be higher than what we first said is a bit cheeky, to be honest with you. And if I'd attended a consultation and had a discussion and was told, yeah, we're looking at the eight point nine, eight seven, eight nine, and then he said, actually, now we're going to do nine point seven, I've really driven, I've been wildly cheesed off. So that's one, one thing. The other thing is, um, whilst I agree with everything that councillor Campbell says about, um, you know, people struggling and that sort of thing, I would be, I think it would be completely irresponsible of council to, uh, to say, oh, well, we won't do anything about it because at the end of the day, at the end of our term, um, we would be leaving an even bigger mess for the next people that, that get on the council. So I think it's unfortunate, but we have to say things cost money and we have to pay for them and this is the only way that we can do it. Um, I just wanted as well, um, councillor Campbell mentioned the compounding of the, um, of the cost of rates when we change over to the system of rating. I guess I'm just looking for some clarification or making sure that I'm understanding it. My understanding is that the, the whole rating system is going to change. So whilst we're saying, yeah, it's going to go up by eight point seven percent next, this year or the next financial year, when the rating system changes, potentially low value houses will come down, others will go up. We're not going to be then saying, well, on top of your eight point seven percent that we got last year, we're going to give you another eight point seven percent again this year. And as well as that, the, the, about the way we do the rates, does that make sense? Or which way we do the rates is going to change? Can I just, sorry, I just need clarification about that in my head.
So through the chair, so definitely the change of rating system is separate and disconnected from the rate increase itself. So that's why we're going to consult actually separately on the, on how we make that change, uh, during this year. So when we move, when we look to adopt a twenty four, twenty five, and we were just planning to consult next year, we'll still be talking about what rating risk we might need each year. We'll see the projections, I think our, um, plan detects a four point something percent rate increase, uh, for a year. And that's how much overall rates will go up, uh, because of changing rating system. Some peoples will go up on that, some peoples will go down. So that's right, the change in rating system is a change in distribution. But there will still be a, just a normal, general, overall increase in revenue for the year. And that's why we'll consult on the next, that's why we're separating those two consultations. We're doing one in Goodyear this year on the rating system itself, how it will work. And we'll still do our annual business plan budget next year.
Thank you.
Ready councillor, councillor English.
Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm David, you know, it's going to be minimal for seven, it's not a separate involvement. We're asked to start with now and we cannot keep sliding into the market, becoming more and more sustainable, gets to the point where it's a massive issue. And, you know, we don't end up gutting it to administration or anything like that because, you know, it's good, it's, it's tough medicine, but everybody in the world's taking it in every walk of life at present. So we've got to do what's right, we've got voted in to do what's right, or the city not. You know, and I know it's going to be tough for people, but at the end of the day, still in a two or three part of the week. And we just can't continue down this road, becoming a standard move. But, you know, we need to get back in front of the game a little bit and start throwing some of this back. Uh, stop, but that's just my thoughts.
Any further comments or questions? Councillor Simpson. We went out to consultation, eight with five with them. That's where we should be going, we're going to change, we should go back up, of course, I'd actually give. Thank you, councillor. Any further com- sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was pointing at, yes, um, not interesting, but it's about finding. So we went out with eight point five based on assumption of what the CPI was at that time. Through the consultation process, we've been very clear that the CPI subsequently was higher than what we based our, our assumption on. So we have been talking about either, um, eight point five or eight point seven.
Seven, yeah.
Um, there's the two, um, gears. Um, so just, just for, um, transparency, currently we have talked to the community about those two numbers and the rationale behind those two numbers.
I am lying, the eight point seven, but I'm here. Any further questions or comments before I make mine? Well, I don't get a vote. It's in the hands of elected members, councillors. And my previous years, I will, I support the recommendation as published. I acknowledge we've got issues, but to now go and put it up high than we suggested, I think, moralistically is not good. I acknowledge, and I think we all acknowledge that we have issues. As I have kept saying in a lot of publicity, and I could be prepared to lead with this as well. I've already discussed with the CEO about doing, once Sean has come up with a. Once Sean has come up with a draft so that we're all on exactly the same page, special from the mayor's desk. And I would be pointing out as tactically as possible, the reasons why council cannot afford to solve everybody else's costs of living, otherwise we ourselves go backwards and then we have a bigger issue. I support the current recommendation. Yes, we certainly have to emphasize what facilities are available for those who are going to have problems paying. But when you look at the rest of air peninsula, we all seem to be in the same boat, we've all got problems. That's how I would stand if I was voting.
Suggest a bit, taking extension or expanding things.
Sorry, you're right, CEO. Our fifteen minutes, councillor Simpson, are you moving on?
We're reading that we, we've got.
I just wanted to make the comment, you know, you're talking, you said, mayor, about, um, making sure that you do, you know, from the mayor's desk, you talk about why the rates have increased. I would really like to see, um, maybe from the mayor's desk and lots of things out there in to tell people what their options are if they're struggling with the rates, more so now this year than ever, I would say.
We wish to extend the fifteen minutes, otherwise we're going to have to pause our conversation. Uh, councillor Boarder moves a further extension, second to councillor Inglis. Up to fifteen, can be sure. Any further comments, which I'll certainly take on board your comments, councillor. Oh, sorry, we need to put the motion, those in favour, do as they. Harry, thank you.
If I also may ask, there's been some discussion around the, um, the potential rate increase. Is there any other directions anyone, our demonstration in terms of finalizing the documents?
Well, sure, to the CEO, my question's out, what goes in B and C, where we've got three X's?
That is essentially the question, if councillors do not have any other adjustments that they want to make. Actually, yes, right, 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 yeah. Those who want to include or delete or edit any of the balance of the annual business plan, we do need to get that direction tonight.
Does anybody have such a request or direction, or do we just delete, busy and see? Councillor Knox.
I was going to say, I did algebra at school, I did pretty well with algebra. I spent a lot of time trying to work out there and I couldn't get anywhere, so.
The X's.
I concur exactly, it wasn't one of my favorites.
I loved it.
In that case, we have a recommendation, three parts. Somebody care to move a second?
We're in discussion, but we're in voting.
I was still with this, my apologies, I didn't write it.
I pay attention.
Still keep time for coffee then?
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there any further discussion? Councillor Knox.
Just going to move the recommendation.
Oh, right.
Into form.
All right, if that's the end of, Catherine. Oh, sorry, yes, councillor.
I've just got a question. So what we're actually going to be voting on now is a total of eight point seven percent rate increase, is that correct?
I'll open my head up as well and say it was actually, I've got it on the screen here, it's eight point nine percent. This is kind of what we were talking about before. It was that it was based on seven point five, but then the slides that we were using in the public consultation said CPI recently down to seven point nine. Um, two dollars forty million increase or eight point nine percent rate increase, is what we would have shown on the slides. I'm not sure where that fits in, but.
Well, a recommendation just around point seven, that's what I see here, at least isn't a member.
Yes, through the chair, so I've just got ease during my station, you can get a piece, you know, bring all that information. So just put that in as a, you know, to move by a point four, hearing the right, we should move by a point four. Because of the other assumptions that we have under the multi-nation plan, some of them around location based means. Um, the shift is there going to shift all our costs. Um, also we can have this sort of pass on the fall in that rate increase. So, yeah, eight point nine was a consultation to show, you know, things being anything. Um, but when we want the business, what, as well as can tell.
Right, would somebody care to move a second that we end our discussion and go back into formal meeting? Move councillor Inglis, second to councillor Todd. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Now we're back into the formal meeting. Would somebody care to move and second, recommendations as they now stand in four point two point three? Move councillor Boarder, second to councillor Simpson.
Don't worry about that, that's right.
So I can change them around. Have a closer look again, but don't forget this technology sort of thing. Oh, slow down. I'll put the motion, those in favour? I thank you.
Okay.
In unanimous.
In unanimous.
Yes.
Give him a second, give him a second. He was on to it though.
It has been a hard decision, we've all got flak. We've just got to make sure both elected members wise and administration wise separately and together, we do our damnedest to make sure that we do deliver to the, to the council, to the community as possible where we can. On that note, at twenty one minutes past seven, I want to declare the meeting closed. Thank you for your attendance, you see the dust set without hundred meters.